Pretty good. How's things in the news world?
To be said.
It's getting close. When they start.
What have you been up to?
You enjoying it? Wake up.
Howdy, howdy. How are you, sir? Good to see you.
Morning. Thank you for being here. If you'll stand, we'll be led in a word of prayer. By Chris Morris, representative of Senator Bob Hall's office.
Dear Lord, thank you. This day and the beautiful day you give us. Thank you for all the blessings that you give us this day and every day. Many blessings that we are not even aware of yet. Thank you for the greatest blessing of all. That's you suffering greatly for us and by your cross for us, saving us from our sins and from ourselves. We ask that you please guide our court officials' court in making our decisions for us. Make your decisions for them through this Lord and also state wide and our country where we are in a time of crisis. We're in this country. We need you back and we need you to guide us. We got our officials. We got our hearts. The company will help the Lord and ask that in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Chris. Call to order the Van Zant County Regular Session Commissioners Court meeting on Wednesday, July the 21st, 2021, at nine oh two AM. Quorum is established with all members of court present with the exception of Commissioner Pearson. He is not able to attend today, but we do have a quorum. So we move to item number two. Discuss, consider dispensing with a reading of minutes of the meeting of the Commissioners Court and approval of same for July the 7th, 2021. Susan has asked that we table that. There we need to get some clarification on it. And so I would make a motion. We table the.
Exactly.
Got a motion by commi- got a motion by myself, second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number two is tabled. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion about the bills that was submit- submitted for payment? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying of county bills as submitted.
Local.
Got a motion by Commissioner LaPran, second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion about any of the bills that were being ratified? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. General business is any general business we need to be made aware of. Is there any announcements or anything that we need to know about? Do what? Okay. Okay. Do we have blood drive going on at Paul Michaels? Is there any other general business, any other announcement? Being none, we'll move to public comments. Scott, did we have a public, anyone sign up for public comments or anything? Item number seven, discuss and consider approval of Van Zant County Emergency Service District Number Three, 2020 Annual Financial Report for the Fiscal Year ended in September 30th, 2020. They did submit their, but their audit from Patillo, Brown and Hill did their audit. Everything looked good.
Yes, it's good. This is after being seen.
Yeah.
I make a motion with.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Melton to approve the, the 2020 Annual Financial Report for Emergency Service District Number Three. Second by Commissioner LaPran. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eight, discuss and consider an order establishing criteria for redistricting of political boundaries. As y'all know, that's a mess. Looks like don't get messier. But we're just, we're getting all the counties business in order. And if you see at the back there, the it's an order established criteria for redistricting of the political, what, what we're planning on doing and, and everything. So.
Of course, the biggest problem with redistricting this year is that the census isn't going to be in until September the 30th. And so it's going to be November probably before they get redistricted done, which means probably the primary next year is going to be cut off for two, three months.
Yeah. If you remember 10 years ago, we went through the same ordeal where they pushed the primary from first March to, I think it wound up being the end of May. Then if you have any runoffs, it pushed that all the way into July. 10 years ago, and it looks like we may be going, going through it again, but we need to establish our criteria for the redistricting. We've already contracted with, with, with the company. All firm to do it, just like we did 10 years ago. And is there a motion to approve that criteria for the redistricting of the political boundaries? Got a motion by Commissioner Melton, second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number nine, discuss and consider creating a facility maintenance manager position. Okay. We, and then there's been discussion and back and forth of hiring a maintenance facility maintenance manager position. You, you have the numbers before you as to what it would cost. Sandy, did you want to address the court on that? Because
Before Terry's very work job, he approved a position for FY 2022 for maintenance manager. A maintenance supervisor, now a manager. We looked at the salary of being forty thousand per year. And so you asked me to come back and see what it would cost the county to have that position for the remainder of fiscal 2021. I did put some numbers together for you and salary and benefits cost you approximately $10,900 to have that position from, it will start Monday, July the 26th and run through the end of the fiscal year. And then y'all already proved it to be in the next year.
But we've got covered it budget this year, right?
We will do a budget. You'll have to do a budget amendment from your contingency plan.
Okay.
You know, I made note, I give you the payroll schedules for the rest of the fiscal year. And also I note that, you know, because of our accounting system, we're already running a little behind on that salary line. And so towards the end of the year, we'll also have to progress once again. Say.
There's no doubt we need a manager over all our county facilities. Just for the upkeep. Keep us aware of what's going on in the facilities and what we need to budget for. Facility maintenance.
What you're doing today is the, the local government code allows you to create a position during the fiscal year. So that's what you're doing. That's creating positions so that you can hire.
This person will oversee all the maintenance and upkeep on county home facilities throughout the county. It wasn't yard work to oversee the jack or stuff here at the court.
Soon he's going to be, or she will be supervised to term full this year.
Is there a motion to create the facility management, maintenance management position starting July the 26th, 2021? So I got a motion by Commissioner Melton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner LaPran. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number 10, discuss and consider authoris- authorization of, for the county of Van Zant to issue requests for proposals for administrative services and request for qualifications for professional services for the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. Now, that is a huge undertaking right there. The federal government bypassed the state and sent, they're sending money. We've already received half of it. They're sending the, the other half a year from now. But as you know, when you're dealing with the government, they also send you a packet about that thick that says, okay, here's all the regulations. And don't miss one, or you're going to have to pay us back. And so that's what this is, is to go out for RFPs for the administrative services. We have a Keith Payne here from Grant Works. If Keith, if you would like to address the court about anything on this.
Judges and commissioners, thank you for allowing me to be here today. The administrative services for the American Rescue Plan Funds is, it functions much like a grant. This is actually not a grant, but the procurement for administrative services functions much like that. And so admin services with this grant would entail the recording side of that, which is, which is this, the logos. But also involved in that would be understanding the guidance of the act itself. So as the county develops its wish lists or projects, IP would be nice to have a little pair of eyes to make sure that the county is compliant as, as well as we have clarified that the procurement would need to follow the two CMRT guidelines. So that would entail not only the reporting side of that, but in terms of the project, making sure that they can stay, it's all a standard. Any environmental reviews as well as project management, project oversight. So just understand that for administrative services, if you're, you're hiring an administrative board as before, any questions that I can answer for anybody.
Questions for?
Keith, I have one. Today at least, there's no definitive list of things that you can do under this act.
And in the, Mr. West, in the additional guidance that the Treasury put out, there were four mentioned eligible activities. The first three have to be tied back to the COVID related mention. And then the fourth would be infrastructure, which would be water, sewer, and water plant. And they come up with additional clarification that sewer would include store, fluid, rail, sanitary sewer. So that's the, that's the guidance that's been put out for the potential activities.
I know that supposedly in September, they're going to give a, a better list, but I don't know. That's what I've been told.
I keep hearing that rumor that there's going to be additional eligible activities. And that's, I think, not sure, but I think that's somewhat based on the care that which if there was a criticism, it was a communication with speech bill. The information that we determine is, it is what it is. I know a lot of counties, a lot of small towns, cities, we love that roads and streets and are only told that that could be additional guidance. But the sources that we have saying that eligible activities that we have are the eligible activities.
Of course, we, we just received five million dollars of the 11 million dollars that we're supposed to get right now. But on these projects, now is it my saying that you, you kind of write these project up as, as we, like a broadband project or whatever, and it's submitted to the, to the government to make sure that it falls under their guideline before we spend the money.
Well, we know the guidelines. I can only speak for our words, but rather than taking our regular grant administrators and sticking them over here in this project for a season, we hired an American Rescue Plan team. So we have a dedicated management, dedicated project manager for American Rescue Plan. So we know the guidance. Obviously, if there's a question why that won't compare to the guy, guidance and reach out to the proper person if we need to verify that. But we're confident in the guidance as it stands today.
I would just, I wouldn't want it to come back on the taxpayers, your advantage candidate. We had. Yeah, right.
But my understanding is they're not going to give you, we would love to, okay, present a, would you approve this? It would just be approved. My understanding is here's your guidelines. Stay within them. We're not going to bless each and every project. We've given you the guidelines. Stay within them. And if you mess up, you'll pay us back.
That's kind of, that's kind of what I'm trying to get at. Who's going to be responsible if you say, yeah, this is the guidelines we need to follow? And then somehow we spend the money and then we don't get rid of.
It is Washington, you know.
We have to pay it back.
But. But you.
We're confident, stay ahead. I recommend this.
Okay. Any other questions for Keith? Thank you, Keith. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
The is there a motion to go out and authorize, can, are you, Van Zant, to issue a request for proposals for the administration services? And request for qualifications for professional services for the American Rescue Plan Act of 2020? So got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions, discussion?
Now, I, I approve this. Ms. Hill will be putting that in the newspaper. Or whoever. Yeah. What kind of timeframe will it turn?
Yeah. But we're okay. I think, I think. Yeah. I don't know. That's a concern for, yes, sir.
Yes, commissioners and judges, there, there's the question to my process. Will follow the goal if needs fall, do you see a part of the guideline? There's a question, the goal process that there will be an act with. Ms. Hill will be sending you, you know, suspension down from this, right in front of state. So there's a process, I think, that they have, that's 14 days and then you'll have a score created, which will allow the bank to
But this is a lot larger than what the auditor's office or, or us commissioners, we, 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 we're going to, we have to have someone that's going to oversee.
I think we need to make note of the administrative fees will be included in the grant.
Yes.
We're. Taxpayers are not really having any money.
And it's not actually a grant as Keith. Yeah. They say it's not. Yeah, but it, but it operates just not difficult. Absolutely. And so any other questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number 11, discuss and consider interlocal agreement with CD of Fruitvale. Mr. LaPran, I believe that's yours.
Yes, your honor. This is to work on the city streets and stuff around Cedar Fruitvale. I presented to them and they're okay with it. As you can see, they've done sign off for it if the Commissioners Court agrees to it. Allow them to reimburse us for expenses related to working on our streets.
So is that a motion to approve the interlocal agreement?
Yes.
CD of Fruitvale. Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner LaPran, second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number 12, discuss and consider approving certificate of exemption for regarding property on Van Zant County Road 3502. That's Commissioner Pearson's. I did talk, oh, I talked, I talked to Keith. He said this is a subdivision that really don't have to be even don't, don't have to come for and, and request for Commissioners' approval. They just need to do a certificate. It's that you may address. State your name.
Okay. My name's Ken Lane. I represent Runway Ranches. We've done divided subdivisions here. I think this is kind of operating under the new set of subdivision regulations. And we wanted, we wanted to kind of lay this out into a way that we could establish exemption for that project process. And we did this on this particular project. It's eight total lots. I did talk to Commissioner Pearson two days ago. And one of the minor items we have addressed is that the four lots surrounding the county road will be 5.01 acres. We're redoing that survey. We're going to move those ends about three and a half inches. This is to accomplish that. But you know, I, I wanted to get one of these under my belt under that new subdivision regulations where you can see exactly what's going on, on this street. Accompanied it with a copy of our joint driveway agreement. We don't build roads. We do put a driveway. It's a very high quality rock driveway. It's shared by four lots. We've used this driveway agreement for about 22 years. It's worked very successfully where we make sure that all of the lot owners at closing sign this document that states their shared interest and ownership of the driveway, but also that the county will never be responsible for any maintenance or concessions. It's also included on the covenants and deed restrictions that go on every lot at closing. The owner signed again that the county will never maintain that private driveway. These are going to be really nice lots. They all have paid, high rail data interest bridge one. We're running electricity, water lines to the lots in the back. We're shutting April's end of the square foot and greater cycle alone, so they can never be subdivided, even 10 acre lots in the back. That's the one correction we will make. Those front tracks will be 5.01 acres. And then we'll have individual surveys. So this is more or less just a sales survey that we use. It'll have a real file in the county, but it's just something that we can show people where they are looking at a lot. It will consist of eight individual surveys. So the certificate of, that we're asking for is to present to the water company, to the electric company, that we've been through the process of counting of what we're doing out here and then.
Any questions?
Actually, the modification, there's a lot. How wide will the road be going into the development?
Okay, each of the back lots own 25 foot frontage. So it's a total of 100 feet. And that road is 14 foot wide of rock, six, six inch deep rock.
Okay, but the main entrance is what I'm talking about. What would the main entrance be? What?
It'll be two 10 foot gates.
Okay.
So 20 foot entrance. It'd be recessed and we'll try to.
Do you have a copy of that agreement with the homeowners? I don't have one.
Okay. I do have an extra here.
I'd love it.
Yeah, that's the, that's the driveway agreement.
Okay, great.
This is a copy of restrictions.
Okay, thank you.
That we use.
These are extra. I mean, I.
That's, that's what we use. So that, that 100 foot wide entrance that encompasses those four, those are 25 foot own pieces. There's another shared valve on those individual. And then the, the easement encompasses all of that where we put the water lines down, electric poles, and then we have the joint driveway. Put two 18 inch culverts on very back to split off the prime lots.
From one property line to the other property line on the entrance, it's a total of 40 foot.
Oh, 100. Well, yeah. Five acres will be 100 foot wide.
Okay. That's what I think. You got to, no matter what, you know, even if the, the roads are over five acres, which, you know, it pretty much exempts a, a plat. If you're building a road into a development, it has to be 60 foot wide.
Right away.
Right away. Yeah.
And we got a hundred.
So we're, we're okay. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think you're probably talking about, you're going to put a 10 foot, 10 foot, 10.
Right.
Now, these are, you got enough for, inlet, it just looks more grand. That's like a big line. It's like, and each one has their own.
Will it be able to come back and dent that 25 foot off? Now we got 75 foot enters and nothing does.
It'll always be, one, it's 100 foot back until you get about 1,400 foot and then it drops to 50. We only had two lots back there in the back. First, almost 500 feet is 100 foot wide in the back two lots, just because those two, two 25 foot, that is, that's 50 foot wide to their drive. And they can go in like the entrance there. They don't have to go all the way back.
And are you presenting the modified back today?
I will have it today in the office. I don't have that in the wood week, but yes.
You'll bring it in and.
Yes, I will. That's the only thing I would ask was just that. It would be. Yes, I will. That's the only I would ask, is just if it would be approved based on those front lots being five point oh one surveys.
So what do you, what, what you're asking for is just a certificate of exemption?
Yes. I think subdivision regulations have that language in there. So I guess this is kind of the way. Let's say that was what, you know, what the process would be to ask for one.
He's asking for an exemption based on what he's going to turn in to us later on.
Yeah. I'm assuming through the commissioner, Commissioner Pearson, that he would have that documentation.
He can turn it in, yeah.
Yeah, now, is there a motion? Okay, motion by Commissioner West. To approve the certificate of exemption regarding property on Vanzant County Road thirty five oh two. Is there a second?
What we, what we need to add, uh, based on the new survey, modified survey showing more than five acres in each of the front.
All, all lots in, in all.
Okay, you'll state that whole motion now. Motion certify the, the certificate of exemption regarding property on Vanzant County Road thirty five oh two. I would say contingent on providing the surveys.
Survey showing that each of the four lots are more than five acres.
And I think you said there's going to be five oh one.
Yeah.
Five point oh one.
The reason our, our subdivision ordinance says that the lots have to be over five acres.
Yeah.
It doesn't say five acres or more. It says over five acres. And the way it was drawn up, they were five acres exactly. And I said, well, that, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number thirteen, receiving file for record, uh, district uh, court order reappointing Sandy Hill as county auditor for a two-year term ending uh, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. That's exciting for me. Thank you. It's exciting for all of us. Is there any action need to be taken on that? Yeah. Okay.
I make the motion, we recorded.
Okay. Okay, motion by Commissioner West and second by Commissioner Milton, record that Sandy Hill has been reappointed.
In the state of two-year term.
For a two-year term in the September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. You do a great job, Sandy. Your office does. Your, your office does a great job. It's a, a thankless job. It's a hard job, but I think we've got the right person for the job. And, uh, thank you for everything you do. Item number four, uh, fourteen, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget amendments. And is that the one for the three thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars? Okay, so we can pull that budget amendment out. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the budget amendments? So you got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner LaBradd. Any questions or discussion about any of the bud- budget amendments? Being none, all in favor of approving them, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider approval of June twenty twenty-one fiscal and, uh, financial and investment report of county treasurer to be entered into the minutes of commissioners' court. Is there a motion to approve the June twenty twenty-one financial report? Got a motion by Commissioner West. Is there a second? Okay, second by Commissioner LaBradd. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number sixteen, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices, departments of county government and approval entry of same in the court's minutes as matter of record. Mr. West, you have any comments on the report?
I do. Uh, of course, it's the last meeting of the month, and we should have them all in, but we don't for one short, and which this particular one's unusual. It's not been short before, so I'm hoping that it can be on our desk. But it's not that.
And, and, and in honor of Mr. Pearson and him being absent, which one was it?
It was the district clerk.
Keith would ask that question.
I have been in contact with Ms. Wilson. We did have an issue with her.
Well, I knew something had to be wrong because she's never. But I had to tell.
Word, yeah, he is, yeah.
Okay. Is that a motion to approve the report?
Yes.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner West. Is there a second? I'll second it. All in favor say aye. Those, those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Is there a motion to adjourn? Got a motion by Commissioner Milton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. All in favor say aye. We are adjourned. All, all opposed, we are adjourned.
Keith was picking it up. That wasn't a bad thing.
I do, I do.